So the board is going to reconvene to the regular meeting at seven oh nine. Um, that does bring us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And the second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve the amended resignation of Carrie Linger, bus monitor from effective September twenty first, two thousand twenty-two to effective October twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
He was amended because.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, amend the appointment title of Christina Bolson from district office secretary to district office secretary provisional senior typist. May I have a motion? Thank you, Eddie.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments?
Again, we did have a little confusion asking having your resignation and appointment. So this just makes it really more clear on the appointed assistant office secretary. But we always try to keep the social service titles on. That's how I ask the person to serve. Uh, so she's a senior type this. That's a position. But again, it's provisional, so she can take the exam that's offered.
Any questions from the board?
No, but I know she sincerely missed it.
Definitely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District approved the three-year probationary appointment of Paul Matthews, music teacher in the music teacher tenure area effective December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The probationary period of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two through December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section three zero one two of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to education law section three zero one two dash D of either effective or highly effective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. May I have a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is he there?
No.
His wife just had a baby.
Oh, very.
Um, any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve the appointment of Carrie Sickles, part-time teacher's aide, effective December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We have a motion? I have Chris and Tiana. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, approve the student of school employees, Spencer Baumlin, grade four, to attend the Whitney Point School District for the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three school year and let the tuition be waived. May I have a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the substitute rate of pay schedule effective December thirty-first. Approve the appointment of Amanda Burns, long-term administrative substitute, effective December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. May I have a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Tiana. Thank you, Chris.
So we would like to, as you heard, she's already started. So we changed the date to yesterday.
So that would be December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Tiana and Chris, are you both okay with that change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we can get her for no pay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
I agree.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Welcome. By us.
Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Kathy Mahalco, teaching assistant in the teaching assistant tenure area effective December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments?
So as we discussed, um, this, uh, these, the addition of these two teaching assistant positions, um, offers us the opportunity to have more people working more directly and structurally with students. Um, these, we're sort of seeing this as maybe a career ladder thing that we can offer within our district that people who are interested in furthering their education and going on to get certifications that potentially, you know, move into different positions within the district. And in fact, we have, uh, our other teaching assistant was going on to get her teaching certification.
So.
Wonderful.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Sheila Hibbert, teaching assistant in the teaching assistant tenure area effective December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. May I have a motion? Um, Brian and Chris? Any questions or comments?
No, but I'm gonna say a comment. I, um, have been able to do a lot of observations we did. And I just want to say we have some of the best teaching assistants I've ever seen. In fact, I tell my students, watch the teaching assistant, what she's doing. And I'm like, why doesn't that person have a degree? So I really enjoy him. He chose these young people that we have working for us to meet that opportunity to better their lives. And I just want to say we are very lucky if this is.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I'm just gonna go ahead and finish off the addenda. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District from Schnango, Cortland and Tioga Counties, New York. The district dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, classifying certain district pre-kindergarten classroom renovations, alterations and improvements as a type-two action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the Board of Education, the Board of the Whitney Point Central School District from Schnango, Cortland and Tioga Counties, the district, intends to undertake a capital project consisting of the construction of alterations, renovation, improvements to additional pre-kindergarten classrooms, including site work improvements and other apparent and related improvements and the acquisition and installation in and around the foregoing improvements of original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus and technology improvements and other services incidental thereto the project and whereas the Board now intends to determine as to the classification of the project as a type-two action under article eight of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and, um, six NYCRR, part six one seven collectively seeker. Now therefore, the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District from Schnango, Cortland and Tioga Counties, New York hereby resolves as follows. Section one, based upon its review of the materials and records of the district, the Board hereby determines that the proposed pod project constitutes a type-two action under seeker six NYCRR six one seven point five C two as a replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of a facility in kind on the same site, and that no further actions or proceedings by the district are required to be taken under seeker with respect to such project. Section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eddie. Any questions or comments?
So, um, last week, we spoke, and yet we haven't had a product update in October. Uh, they let you guys know a lot of things, many estimates, uh, privately. Um, this is probably one of the final parts before we get SED approval, where we can edit out this word. Um, but they had a, you know, a list of things that we still needed to tidy up. Uh, one was how we had to process so that we added the UPK classrooms after the initial secret was done. And again, we're funding those rooms with the, uh, our stimulus funds. Um, so again, it has to be out to overcoat and again, or maximizing the resources of the contractors already on site. Um, but that was a common SED that due to that additional scope of work for, um, well, without secret being included of that, they said we need a secret on specifically addressed UPK classrooms. Um, and what that is, is again, uh, we want a type-two, that's basically saying that there will be no major environmental impact. It's a type-one. Again, a whole other list of things that will have to be, uh, bothered. Um, so yes, really, it's formality. Yeah, so when you guys prove this tonight, I'll read this back. Yes, we are open to have a final sign off. Roughly soon.
So with, if we get it signed up on the SED approval, let's say this month, um, are we still on schedule to finalize and prepare the bid docs for January, February from work?
Yep, that's, um, yes, the plan, um, and you have to have a special meeting whenever those, uh, bids to, um, again, because of the scope of work.
Right.
On this out or prospective bidders, at least fortified, at least.
Yeah.
Really have good solid numbers. So if I'm, again, the timeline, soon as we get that approval, it's gonna be advertised and out there. So, yeah, that may be something coming up with a special meeting because we're, uh, for a fool. But, um, yeah, uh, we, yeah, I think we're all pretty hopeful that it's the last step. I think that, yeah, case for personal comments and whatever address is one of the last piece.
Okay. And once all of the, uh, the bids have been awarded, I'm assuming this company will provide a detailed project schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll be privy to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Basically, um, again, once the bids are out there and we have that special meeting to award, uh, they'll be here, they'll be in, yeah, with a better outline of everything. But we're all kind of on the proceeds because we've heard again, if time, you know, right now is very volatile. We actually, today, a project of our size, twenty-four million, you know.
Oh.
Um, and it's just assigned and everything. I think that was, um, instruction here in general, uh, our buses are typically around five hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand or typically their foots. Um, I got to go in right full and it's around eight hundred thousand just with bus breaks.
Wow.
So, uh, you know, everything is bad magnitude of more.
Yeah.
Though we would have a practice today, potential alternates and things we may have to look at, the project to reduce or to be under budget, but not a lot that I don't have quite yet.
Right.
Up to where it is to, um, but again, you have to have a GCD.
I thought you guys did a good job looking at the overall and already reducing some of the areas.
So that's such a near point. So this being today was on top of what we've already had too. I mean, I.
I figured.
It's a really hard time.
We understand you guys are in a situation that you have no control under. So, you know, you've got to pick your biggest bang for your buck. What's the most important and, and go with that. And everyone's gonna have to be okay with it. So we understand inflation is out of control and it really is. And everybody's just seeing that personally and professionally. But we thank you for, I'm glad to hear it's still on track. Yeah.
Yes.
Because everyone keeps asking about it, as you know, because, because of the field and the sports and everyone wants to know, are we on schedule?
At this point, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You, you can save a little money because NFL and NASL and all those are looking to go back to grants. They're pushing really hard. They go all the professional are pushing really hard to go back.
Well, it's not fun to slide on, slide on turf. We wanted turf ten years ago. Now we're getting it now with people we don't want it.
Yes.
Thank you, Zach, for that update.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, approve the substitute rate of pay schedule effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Aid substitute, minimum hourly wage as per New York state law. Daily non-certified teacher substitute, ninety-five dollars per day for seven hours. Daily certified teacher substitute, one hundred twenty dollars per day for seven hours. Long-term certified teacher substitute, one hundred sixty-five dollars per day, seventy point five hours by request and approval of superintendent. LPN substitute, seventeen fifty per hour. Up to eighty-nine days and same assignment. No retroactive pay for previous daily work, no benefits. Term certified teacher substitute salary and benefits per teachers association contract. Finite period of time equal to a semester or more in duration. No retroactive pay for previous daily or long-term work. Substitute teachers working half a day, which is half the hours of a full day substitute, will receive half the pay rate for the appropriate substitute category. May I have a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
So yeah, I thought it was pretty, I'm gonna read all of that resolutions again. We do love to have these rates all on the same resolution that we refer back to this times throughout the year and previous years, uh, but the changes, the only change proposed is really that daily not certified, really, the ninety-five dollars. And that's because of the the wage bump going up. Um, so again, uh, just so that had to be increased by minimum wage, we're not proposing something new just because feeling generous.
Thank you, man. And Zach, I know, I know some of the schools, like Marathon pays a hundred and ten um, for the certified teacher. So how do we sort of rank in the BOCs, boom, Tioga?
Um, this was something that was a pretty hot topic from several years ago, um, where our rates were, um, sixty-five and ninety. Uh, so we've come along with five or six years to be more competitive with these rates. Um, but again, that minimum wage bump has been pushing up that non-certified rate. Um, drastically, uh, again, it was not where minimum wage is currently thirteen, twenty, it's gone to fourteen. Uh, which affects honestly probably over close to a hundred fifty, two hundred people here in the district.
And how do we compare with the certified rate?
Um, I, again, I think right now all of our rates are very competitive and we did add that long-term certified rate. That's really another way to just be more competitive, what we're trying to look for in incentivize those types of things.
And it, trust me, this is a lot better than it was. I, I was.
You know, I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's.
Again, you know, we struggle all the time because so what? Uh, banking goes up to a hundred and twenty dollars rate. So we go hard. But in reality, someone isn't banking, just gonna work. So.
I was happy that we were a hundred and twenty, merits a hundred and ten. So the people between here and there, yeah.
Yeah. And we try to attract those people, but in reality, I mean, we live closer to the banking area. All the schools, you know, you can charge people what you want, but, um, we have to build our reputation. Normally, it's where a mountain is that people get through partnerships or whatever we have.
And this is good. It just, for a while, the quality of what we were getting for what we were paying was the quality of what we were paying.
Yeah.
And so I don't ever like to keep up with the Joneses because there's other districts we can't ever keep toe, to toe with, but we shouldn't be overly out of the field of, of where they are. Because, yeah, so I, I appreciate it. And I know it was tough, but I think that it, it's, it's something that's needed. And I mean, to say that many of our employees are, as the minimum wage, that speaks a lot too, as to who's working here and what they're making. So again, I appreciate it. It's, thank you.
With minimum wage going up, will there be adjustments for the people who, I mean, obviously anybody who's currently making minimum wage, um, they're going to get bumped up, but I know that in the past that has then meant that people who have had been here for a while would now be making.
That's also the two.
Okay, so that change won't be made immediately. That change wouldn't be go, we wouldn't do that immediately. Okay.
We just keep paying five fifty for eggs instead of two fifty. World is changing. Well, thank you for that update. Good.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Prove the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three unpaid tax report. May I have a motion?
So much.
Thank you, Tiana. And a second?
There you go.
Thank you, Brian.
Back here, you're on.
Uh, so again, this is our year in December, now after the tax budget period, um, I like this report for a few reasons, but one of my things I love to look at is the percentage of uncollected school tax versus the overall levy. Um, and we're trending in the right direction. Uh, it's a three-year total report. Um, in three years ago, seven point five, six percent was uncollectible, seven point one percent last year, and this year is down to six point seven. So, you know, whatever stock you want to put in it, uh, it's, it's, it's going that way because you know, troublesome. If there's a greater portion of school tax being not paid during the uncollective period, um, what happens would be uncollected, a school tax at five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is realized in party and the county is our bills for county robbery. And the county doesn't give us that effect in existence.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the external audit extra classroom corrective action plan addressing the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two extra classroom audit report. May I have a motion? Um, Brian and Chris? Any questions or comments?
So then, uh, yeah, with the accepted test report, classroom report, uh, to respond back to action plan, for candidates, um, literally this, uh, extra classroom and counter was one of the fundamentals you've had over the years. The counties, again, they're pretty, you know, picky. Uh, you're always gonna have something, we're down with student, try to finish right, hit those over summer, because aren't here. There's always something that you ought to find a little bit in policy. So you can kind of see in that correct action plan, that's based on responses. Yeah, we understand a couple of things within our process of practice, but to say it will, it'll be completely eliminated, but never having, that's not realistic. So, yeah, once we have approval, we'll hold that to the state. And we.
I, I think the other bigger part too is that during COVID, that based on policy, there were some things that kicked in, but then it was, there was circumstantial evidence. So then, I think that was explained very well.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Superintendent's update.
So I'm gonna start with, um, just response to some of the comments that we've had in the last, um, meeting, meetings, um. And Stacy has been so wonderful, organized, and it'd be a list of things to run through. So I'm gonna start, Chris, um, you had a question about homeschooling in the district.
Yeah, and there was a great thing in the Board of Education's letter.
And so I, I just took eighteen, nineteen and twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, so before pandemic and, and now. And, um, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and I'll tell you, so this was the end of the year numbers and they've changed quite a bit during the course of the year because people sometimes pull their kids out and think, hmm, yeah, maybe I don't want to do this. And so we have some, um, in and out, uh, uh, changes there in our numbers. But at the end of the year, in eighteen, nineteen, we had, we had eighty-eight students who were, um, considered homeschool students. Um, out of fifteen hundred and seventy-eight, and that is the total of our enrolled population in district and that's what's a percentage of the whole. So that was five point five percent at that point. And this year, at this point in time, which is different than the end of the year, but at this point in time, um, we have ninety-seven students who are, uh, being homeschooled. And that is out of fifteen hundred and forty-five, which is the total of students we have enrolled in district and plus the homeschool students. So that's six point three percent. So there's a little uptick in that. Um, and we saw, and I, I will tell you during the pandemic, we saw a greater increase and then some, some, a lot of those kids that came back. Um, another, uh, a series of questions that we had, um, comments and questions, um, during our last meeting, um, why is the district not apply for the grant offered for free lunches? Um, also, um, why, um, well, I'm gonna start with that one. So I, I did some research to find out because, uh, this is a topic that we, uh, talk to the powers that be that manage all school, um, lunch programs in our, in our BOCs all the time about what we qualify for and what we don't. Um, and how can we make sure that we can, um, provide meals for our students? We know that they need them. Um, and I, we've been befuddled, um, by our, you have to be direct certification, which means that it's not just by lunch forms to qualify for the programs that some other districts are using to fund free lunch. And our direct certification, um, which means that you're certified by accessing other services. Um, and so they don't, that's the number, the percentage that gets to into the calculation to figure out whether you qualify to get enough of reimbursement so that there's, it's just a wash pretty much that all students can eat for free and the, and doesn't cause the district anything. And last spring, we talked about, um, what it would look like for us because our numbers, our direct certification numbers are not high enough. So it's not a wash and it would be around a hundred thousand dollars um, for this year that the district would have to pay. Um, and you know, at that point in time, we felt, well, one, two things. One, we really felt that, that with, with the lobbying that was happening, that we were gonna have continued free lunches for all. And there's still a lot of movement on that. I mean, there, and there's a lot of lawmakers who are in favor of that. It didn't happen this year. Some districts, one of our neighboring districts, actually, um, their numbers were a little bit different. And so the amount that they had to pay this year was not nearly as much. And, you know, that also has to do with school size and they're quite a bit smaller than us and they were able to absorb that amount. So we have a neighboring district who is offering free lunches. And then there, there's a number of districts who, um, just qualify for out now. And so it doesn't cost the district anything to be able to do it. So it's not really a grant. It's a, it's a qualification program that we don't qualify for. But I can tell you that we constantly push to say, what are, what are we eligible for? What can we do for our students? We do have provision two, which, which is allows us to have free breakfast for all, and we also have free snacks for students after school. Um, but at this point in time, um, you know, we're not close to qualifying for free meals for all that would be fully funded.
Is direct certification, is that like WIC and SNAP?
Yeah. Medicaid, I mean, there's a, there's a number of things. Yeah.
Okay.
So, and not to, to be, yes, but the silver lining is over the years that the, the, the population.
Which is true.
Are still people that are really needy, but.
Yes.
We've moved
Mm-hmm.
in, in a better direction as far as, is who is here and living here and not put down the can for it.
Mm-hmm.
I know when we first started even looking at our tax returns and stuff, that, that, that's, that's me.
Yeah. So then the time that, you know, I've been here, it's just a long time. You know, I mean, we've had, you know, numbers as high as sixty-nine percent, we're teetering around seventy percent who qualify for free reduced lunch. And now it's just around fifty percent.
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifty.
Oh, thank you.
So.
That's, that's good.
So. Right.
It's not good because there's still a lot of.
There's still fifty, but we're moving in the right direction.
And, um, some people have been, you know, kind enough to share with me where that, where, what they're seeing and what they're getting information on. And so it's hard sometimes to interpret what's happening behind the scenes with each of those schools. Um, but you know, there are, some people have also been told by people who live in districts that they didn't even have to fill out a form. So they just think that it's automatically free for everybody, but that's because they get, you can get direct cert. And so you wouldn't have to fill out a form and you just automatically qualify for free lunch. And so, you know, it's, there's often more to, to that story. But again, it's, it's definitely something we are always, always pushing forward to see what, you know, what we can access to, to make sure that all of our students are, are well-fed every day. Um, also, we, um, uniforms for marching band, um, we're gonna work with Katie Ballin to get new, um, uniforms. We'd like to have some student input in that process too, to make sure that, you know, kids are gonna be happy with what they're, they're marching in. So, um, we do intend to do that. And then also we had a comment about driver's ed. So we will seek to, to find if there's somebody's interested in getting that training. Um, it is a separate certification that you have to get. We have had a teacher in the past who's done that. Um, hopefully we can get somebody excited about doing that again, because it's a really, the way we've done it most recently is we've had, um, during the summer, and it's like just a self-funded, everybody sort of. Because it's a really, the way we've done it most recently is we've had um during the summer and it's like just a self-funded, everybody sort of chips in. And we just cover the costs and we use our own district car and put on the brake pedals in there and um. It usually, you know, is a win-win for everybody involved. So we would love to be able to do that again. Girls wrestling has been a a popular conversation. Oh, I've, you know, met with some people since the last meeting. I have another meeting with another person um uh coming up. Um, I've been talking to, we have one student who's um one female student who's wrestling right now in the high school. And I've been talking with her just about what her experience is. We do not have a a protocol or procedure in our district for adding. Uh, a team. And there had, so part of what we've done is sort of said, well, you know, well, we should, um, we should have some kind of procedure because people ask for things. And then people will say, well, what's your rationale? Why would you? Why would you not? Um, we have more of a history of having to consolidate or cut things. In the past during difficult financial times, we've we've made pretty significant cuts. We've also decreased in population pretty significantly through the year. So some teams have have, you know, merged and we've done different things. But we, if we're gonna, I mean, if we're going going to do something, we need to make sure that it's the best choice for our students. And um I'm certainly in favor of having a girls, a females wrestling team. Um, but if we're gonna put money in a place, we need to make sure that it's the smartest way to do it. Um, moving forward because, and we also need to make sure that there's enough students who are interested in doing it. I know we have some. Um, but right now at the, at the school level. We have, you know, we have one student. It may be, I think there was a news story I saw the other night. They said if you build it, they'll come, that if we had a team. So we're trying to figure out how, so again, how can we talk to kids about this? I mean, do we? Well, that's what we're thinking. Maybe that's part of this whole procedure. And then we, you also have to have a a coach. Who's qualified, um, you know, we have to be able to to decide as a board that we're gonna be able to fund this moving forward. Um, and just, you know, developing a a a coherent protocol so that every time this comes up, that we're not just saying, ah, I don't know. Should we do it? Should we not do it? That we have something that makes sense and that that we're doing what's best and, you know, for as many students in the district as we possibly can.
So, Joanne, are you saying that you're you're wanting to put a protocol together in general?
Yes, for general. There have, because there have been other requests. You know, for other things that, um, you know, usually financially is the reason that we end up not doing that. Um, and there have been other programs that have been. Downsized and people are not necessarily happy about that too. So we have to figure out, like, you know, to make sure that we're being as reasonable and and equitable as possible for everybody.
Create a rubric that can be gone through for any request, whether it's to downsize or increase.
Right.
So that you have set criteria to.
And we have a little time because, you know, there's not something that can happen magically right now in the middle of this year. So. As we look forward and and also, I mean, there's things like, you know, do we, do, are there opponents? You know, are there enough teams? Could we merge with another school? I mean, transportation is a problem there, but can we look at something like that if we have just a few students? We want to be able to give as many kids uh uh an opportunity to do what is they're passionate about as we can, but we just also have to do it smartly.
I know the last real positive one was Girls Across. Funding and code, like, there was a lot of stuff that was put towards that. So that really took off. So that was. But I do know, the things that pop, there was a lot of. About the teams and things that we just don't have the students to go across the line.
Yes. Um, so there's some other questions that were raised. Um, what is the uniform schedule and how is it determined? Um, so there was a a a. Money that went to the wrestling club for singlets this year. Um, I, you know, a lot of this stuff comes down to communication. There was no request. Um, to the district for new uniforms. Um, the schedule for uh a uniform replacement is every four years. If there's a need before we, if we're, if we are told, then we take care of that. Um, that didn't happen. Sometimes with teams, there's a lot that are lost. There's, I mean, but we we make sure that everybody has what they need. Um, so we need to make sure that coaches are talking with us about. What we need each each year. Also, um. The use of facilities, which has been a big topic, um. The feeling was that wrestling in particular was the only uh uh entity that was being charged for building use. Um, and so I had, I did a bunch of research to find out and there were eleven, twelve other organizations that also were charged. So if it's a big event and it's beyond school hours and we have to have um employees work overtime, extra time or come in. Um, then there's a charge. You know, we try to obviously make it as reasonable as possible, um, just whatever extra costs are incurred are. Um, what we charge and it's on the form when people request space that says that right there. Um, and in particular, wrestling. And I don't know if you've been to any tournaments are huge. Yes, so yeah, so the need for for people to be employed, you know, above what normally would be on a Saturday or Sunday. Often it's on like uh Martin Luther King weekend is that big one. So, you know, so we, that's, that's why there are costs there, but they're not the only ones. Um, uh, issues with, you know, access to the press box and scoreboards, um. The, you know, this isn't, and also, uh, uh. You know, concession stand, this has been a topic and um we have a history there and uh. You know, we are what we're doing in the project because all of that is now. So moving forward, we're gonna try to be, I mean, that's, you know, in the forefront of our our discussions all the time. How are we gonna figure out so we can do this so that we can give people access, protect people's investments and and their personal property? And um make sure that, you know, it's it's reasonable and and secure for everybody. The access to the scoreboard and the press box right now, I mean, it's a security, it's a security thing. So. Again, we're trying to figure out how can we do this in a way so that people can use our facilities, but we can also make sure that they, things don't get damaged. Or it's, it's the entire district's property and we have an obligation to protect it. And when, and when organizations and everybody has the best interest, but it's a lot to manage and supervise everything and everybody involved. Um, you know, we, I mean, that's, it's hard. So it, but our, our, we just met with some um. Youth club representatives yesterday about like our stance is gonna be, all right, so we know what you want. And, you know, we've got all these things that we have to worry about. So let's start from, where can we work together on this? Where can we get to a place that it's, you know, we're gonna meet everybody's needs and um try to communicate more. Um, so we talked about a lot of ways that we can do that. See other questions, um. Make sure I have everything that we. Stacy, am I missing anything? I think that was everything. Um, so just, so you know, I mean, I, it seems like with so many of these things, communication is the issue. Um, and a lot of things that have happened historically. So very quickly, people will say, well, the district always says no, the district always says no. And maybe sometimes in the past, the answer has been no, but so people don't necessarily ask anymore. So we're really trying to focus on just opening those lines of communication. Oh, and so, you know. Clearly and consistently and trying to have face-to-face conversations because that's so much better than emails often. Um, and just trying to find a way that we can, again. Start from, let's figure this out instead of no or blocking or whatever. It is the feeling that people have been getting. So that's um the work that we're gonna do moving forward. If you hear somebody saying, you know, the district says, no, 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 please say. Let, please ask again or, you know, let's try somebody else.
That's always my response. Please ask again or who did you reach out to? The last time you reached out. Because it could have been two years ago. Well, we don't want to talk about something two years ago. How about now?
Right.
So I appreciate you. This was my list. And you covered everything.
Okay. And so, you know, I mean, there are problems, like there are, there's, you know, the district has, has obligations, you know, for a, for, to a lot of things. That you wouldn't necessarily know or think about. And not until you have a conversation about it, can you get past that and understand it and find a way to do, to to. To meet everybody's needs in some way that maybe not exactly the way anybody saw it coming in. But, you know, moving forward, we can, we can find a way to, to make things work out.
That brings us to the second opportunity for comments from the public. Um, the same um criteria that I read in the first opportunity remain the second. That being said, is there anybody who would like to bring anything up this evening in comments from the public? That brings us to Board of Education conference. Quick question, Joanne. Where do we stand on the bowling? So Dan talked about the inclusive, inclusion. I know that's probably part of it, but the bowling in general, I know you guys are looking at some other programs. Uh, so I just wanted to know how that's going.
So that's part of that. I mean, that's part of, it's being, I mean, so being safe, being, you know, treated with respect. Uh, you know, I think we talked about, you know, just like the golden rule. Every, I mean, to focus on that and try and keep it away from, you know. Larger things that have become more divisive and to just talking about treating everybody in our school community with respect. And that's the work that we're, that we've been um focusing on in this group. The. We also have a number of people who thankfully are coming forward to say that they're hearing things, they're telling us things so that, I mean, sometimes you, things happen quietly. And as much as we try to be really vigilant to watch and to listen to students, to to, having people tell us exactly what's happening behind the scenes is very helpful. And the principals have been working really hard um on that and being very present. Um, so I thank them. Two of them are here, one of them I think is over in the, in the concert.
Thank you.
Um, and we are looking, I like, I think we mentioned before, at a new curriculum too.
Right, and I just wanted to ask if that piece was part of the bowling, which great, I'd love to hear that. Thank you very much. Very, very important. But that's all I had and thank you again. Nice job on the update. I appreciate it. Okay. Um, then we are going to adjourn the public meeting at seven fifty-one. May have a motion? And a second? Thank you, Brian. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.